I'd like to call this meeting to order. Three different times? This is the regular meeting, Market City Commission, March 31st, 2014. Would everyone rise and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Clerk, Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding the absence of Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Ryan?
I move Commissioner Coyne be excused because he's unable to be here tonight.
Okay. We have a reason?
He's out of town.
Is there a mayor pro tem Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse, to excuse the absence of Commissioner Ryan since he is out of the city. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or yes.
Oppose, no. Mr. City Manager? I'm sorry, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Ryan made the motion. Thank you, City Manager. Well, that motion is adopted even though I bollixed it. The next item on the agenda is note of agenda changes. Commissioners, are there any, or City Manager, any changes that we desire to the agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed say no. The motion is passed unanimously. Announcements, we have the usual litany of board and committee vacancies. We have three openings on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, three openings on the Board of Zoning Appeals, one opening on the Harbor Advisory Committee, two openings on the Local Officers Compensation Commission, one opening and one alternate opening for the Marquette Area Waste Water Treatment Advisory Board, two openings for the Marquette Roundfield Redevelopment Authority, one opening on the Marquette Housing Commission, two openings for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one opening for the Planning Commission, the Police Fire Pension Board, one opening, and the Prescott Park Advisory Committee, one opening. The Sister City Advisory Committee has six openings and the Traffic and Parking Advisory has two openings. And I would encourage citizens who would desire to be involved in the affairs of the city to volunteer for these boards and commissions. We certainly can't do the business of the city and the city of the business. The business of the city cannot go forward without the volunteers. And we appreciate the people who do volunteer and we do seek some additional volunteers. Last announcement I have is, in 2014 is an election year. We, well, in the city, we conduct elections annually each year, even the off years. We have three seats open on the City Commission this year and two seats open on the Board of Light and Power. The city charter calls for nominating petitions to be filed for open seats for both the City Commission and the BLP. Anyone interested in running for any of these offices can obtain nominated petitions at the City Clerk's Office. Nominating petitions must be filed with Clerk's Office by 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014. And you can do the petitions two ways. You can either collect 25 signatures, or I believe you can pay $100 fee in lieu of collecting signatures to get your name on the ballot. We encourage people to run for these. They're important offices and three of us will be term limited come November, so we do need some citizens to step up and serve for election. That's all the announcements I have. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. City Clerk, do you have background to read on this?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for ordinance number 615. We're calling a public hearing to review the Planning Commission's recommendation for case 01-ZOA-03-14. Background, at their March 10th, 2014 meeting, the City Commission scheduled a public hearing on 01-ZOA-03-14. That's ordinance number 615, to refine the process for businesses in the community that desire to establish an outdoor seating area on public sidewalk. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their March 4th, 2014 meeting and unanimously passed the following motion. It was moved by CLIP, seconded by Moran, and carried seven to zero to recommend to the City Commission to amend the city zoning ordinance per case 01-ZOA-03-14, to eliminate all references to sidewalk cafes in the zoning ordinance sections 80.02, .24, .25, .35, .36, and 80.65, and to consider either now or in the future deliberation, in future deliberation, the inclusion of all vendors using public property and consistency with current business and vending licenses and other permits. Support materials provided to the Planning Commission are attached. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt ordinance number 615 as presented. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I declare the public hearing now open. Are there any citizens wishing to address the Commission regarding ordinance number 615? Anyone interested in addressing ordinance number 615? Seeing no citizens desiring to address this during the public hearing, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt the ordinance number 615 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to approve ordinance number 615. Commissioner Ryan, do you have anything to say?
Yes, we had some discussion at a past meeting and representation from the community suggesting this would be good for a number of the businesses in our community. And this is really going to be a two-step process. We have another public hearing coming up immediately after this one to deal with the ordinance, but this one simply, as the clerk pointed out, eliminates all references to sidewalk cafes in the present ordinance. So this is the first step in that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further.
Any other Commissioners wishing to address the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to adopt ordinance number 615. And we need a roll call vote, so I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Yes.
Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Animi?
Yes. The motion is adopted unanimously, seven to zero, or six to zero. Item number two is to conduct a public hearing for ordinance number 613 sidewalk cafe permits. City Clerk, do you have a background?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. At its February 10th, 2014 meeting, the City Commission received a presentation from Downtown Development Director Mona Lang on the need for the city to amend its zoning ordinance so that regulations on sidewalk cafes could be streamlined, as has been done in several other Michigan cities. Following the presentation, the Commission adopted a motion directing the City Manager to act expeditiously to amend the city's sidewalk cafe ordinance to meet more recent Since that time, staff has reviewed streamlined ordinances from other communities and believes that the attached draft ordinance number 613 will adequately provide regulation of sidewalk cafes in the city of Marquette. It also should be noted that the City Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended that the City Commission remove all references to sidewalk cafes in the zoning code so that conflicts in the code will be eliminated with the adoption of the new ordinance. The attached draft ordinance has been reviewed by the Commission at its March 10th meeting. One modification has been made to the draft that amends section 2, parent 1, 0, as recommended by the DDA. The change is noted by underline and strike through in the attachment. The city fee schedule will also have to be amended if this ordinance is approved. Two fees will need to be determined, one for a permit with alcohol and one without, based on research on similar fees in other communities. And to cover cost of regulation, staff is recommending establishing a fee of $165 for a permit with alcohol and $110 for one without. Fiscal effect, none by this action, however, future revenue would be realized by permit fees depending on the number of permits issued. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance number 613, an ordinance to amend Chapter 12 Business of the Code of the City of Marquette by adding a new Article 6 sidewalk cafe permits and to set permit fees and penalties. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance number 613. Any citizens desire to address the Commission on this ordinance? Second and last call for any citizens who desire to address the Commission on this ordinance. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this ordinance? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll continue what I started. I move that we adopt ordinance number 613, an ordinance to amend Chapter 12 Businesses of the Code of the City of Marquette by adding a new Article 6 sidewalk cafe permits and to set permit fees and penalties.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay. I guess one question clarifying. Should we state the permit fees that we're setting? Or is it sufficient?
I was just going to recommend that so we can set that in the fee schedule.
Would you be willing to accept a friendly amendment to the motion if we can do that?
As I recall, the recommended fees were $165 with alcohol and $110 without.
Okay.
And of course, we still haven't passed an ordinance that allows alcohol, but that would depend on the next public hearing.
Commissioner Ryan, it's moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Second.
The attorney is looking at you.
Is it okay with Commissioner Reynolds who did the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to adopt ordinance number 613 and add a new article, sidewalk cafe permits, and to set permit fees at $165 for a permit with alcohol allowed and $110 for one without. Commissioner Ryan, anything further that you want to say?
Yes, even though there wasn't any public comment tonight, we did have considerable public comment at an earlier meeting and a great expression of interest from the DDA and some of the business owners in the community. And I think it's important for people to understand that these are going to be regulated. They'll have to meet certain criteria. I'm not going to list all of them, but for example, they can't unreasonably interfere with the view or access to use of property. They'll not be permitted directly adjacent to properties owned exclusively for residential purposes. They shall not unduly obstruct pedestrian movement. There are a lot of regulations that apply, so it's just not a matter of someone can throw a couple of tables out in front of their business and call it a sidewalk cafe. They need a permit and they need to do it right. And I think that if we're going to, again, continue to be this walkable, livable community, this is something that certainly adds to that charm in our business district. So I think it's a positive thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Reynolds, anything further?
Nothing further. Commissioner Ryan summed it up.
Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to approve ordinance 613, and the fees of $165 and $110 for alcohol and not alcohol permits. We'll need a roll call vote on this. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Benzey.
Just a quick question for staff. Who will be realizing the permit fees? Will it be the city or the DDA?
That'll be the city. It'll run through the Clerk's Office.
Okay. Sorry about that, Commissioner Benzey. Any further Commissioners desiring to comment? Oh, Commissioner Campana?
Is this, the fees going to be permanent? Did we say this, or is that going to change over time? Is there going to be adjustments?
They would be subject to review annually with the fair fee schedule.
Annually.
Yeah. And vendors would, or people who have sidewalk cafes would have to pay this fee each and every year they have a cafe? Okay. Anything else any, my fellow Commissioners have? Okay, if not, City Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Yes.
Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Animi?
Yes. Okay, Commissioners, the third public hearing is on ordinance 614, an ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 4, Section 4-2, Parent 1, and Parent 2A-B. City Clerk, could you read the background, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. At its February 10th, 2014 meeting, the City Commission received a presentation from the Downtown Development Director Mona Lang on the need for the city to amend its zoning ordinance so that regulations on sidewalk cafes could be streamlined, as has been done in several other Michigan cities. Following the presentation, the Commission adopted a motion directing the City Manager to act expeditiously to amend the city's sidewalk cafe ordinance to meet more recent standards. It has been determined that if ordinance number 613 is adopted, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquors, Section 4-2, Parent 1, and Parent 2A-B, Consumption in Public, would have to be amended to include sidewalk cafes as permitted areas. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance number 614, an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquors, Section 4-2, Parent 1, and Parent 2A-B, Consumption in Public, to include sidewalk cafes as permitted. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance number 614. Are there any citizens who wish, desire to address the Commission on this ordinance? Okay, we'll close, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this ordinance? Do a grand slam?
Sure. I move we amend Chapter 4, or ordinance number 614, amend Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquors, Section 4-2, Parenthesis 1, and 2A-B, Consumption in Public. This includes sidewalk cafes as permitted areas.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second for this motion? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to adopt ordinance 614, et cetera. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, just again, to let people know what it is we're doing, we're making a very small amendment to an existing ordinance. The actual ordinance says that no alcoholic beverage shall be consumed on the public streets and highways, sidewalks, or public parking lots, nor may any person possess an open container of an alcoholic beverage except under certain conditions. And it lists places like tourist park, Hurley Field, and sidewalk cafes. And it also lists some special permit situations. So although this is being amended to allow certain restaurants, if they meet criteria, to be able to serve in a designated area, the ordinance itself covers much more than that, but we're basically making one small change.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Campana?
Just that having outside sidewalk-type tables and chairs makes it more inviting for the city. It just adds to what we have.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Any other Commissioners desiring to address this ordinance? Seeing none, City Clerk, would you please call the roll call vote on this?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Yes.
Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyne? Oops, sorry. Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Animi?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted six to zero. I guess, right now, I'd like to thank staff and the Planning Commission for expeditiously moving this forward. We asked them to do that. They performed, and I think we'll be ready for this next season, whenever winter leaves, we can put sidewalk tables out. May be a while yet, so hopefully not. The next item on the agenda is our presentations. The first presentation is by Mr. Richard Barron of Foley, Barron, Metzger &amp; Julip. And I'd like Mr. Stackwitz to introduce Mr. Barron, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. As the community and Commission is well aware of, we have been working with this Cliff style site for a number of years in response to a crest by MDAQ. This is part of our yearly update to the City Commission for the community out there. There was a work session that was held prior to this meeting so we could have a more in-depth back-and-forth discussion with the City Commission on the status of the site and where we will be heading with their concurrence in the near future. I have with us Mr. Richard Barron. He is counsel for the city of Marquette on this project, and he is going to be giving you a presentation on that status update, so if you would please welcome Mr. Barron.
Thank you very much. This is going to be an abbreviated summary of some of the materials that we went over during the work session earlier this evening, and in case there's any public questions or comments on that, and just to bring everyone up to speed on where we're going with the site. Now, as the Commission certainly knows, and as many members of the public know, this is a piece of city-owned property that used to be an industrial site. And at this particular location, they did a lot of distilling of wood. They took big pieces of wood in, put them in retorts, heated it up, and generated chemicals from them. So it was an industrial operation right on the shore of the lake. What we'll be covering here, as you can see on the agenda, is discussing the first top couple items there, top four or five maybe, deal with some of the historic operations that we've been involved with. The center portion of the agenda is some of the near-term information that we've generated. And then the bottom part of the agenda here is where we're going to approach the DQ to go in the future. From the operational history perspective, and you'll notice that I'm not going to just go through and read all these signs, these slides, you all can read those together, but the critical takeaway here is that it's an industrial site, it's located now right in the city, the city acquired it and has been able to put part of that property back to use. We'll be talking, for the purposes of this presentation, about the part of the property the city currently owns. This will be referred to as the city property. Because if we look on the slides over here, and I'm not going to be a slave to the mic, if that's all right. We've got two pictures here taken from different times, a long time ago. One is looking at the site from one perspective, another's looking at the site from another perspective. And the interesting thing from both of these slides, as you can see, that there are materials that were going from the site off into the lake and then being carried down by nearshore currents. Then in another part of the site, you've got materials going into the lake off-site and being carried the other way. If we look at this particular portion of this slide, you'll see all of those industrial buildings in the center. That's where they had the retorts, that's where they did a lot of the distillation and generation of the chemicals. And when the site was left, there were a lot of materials that were left. There were old buildings, there was material underground, et cetera, piping still with materials in it. So for our discussion here, we're looking at the 46 acres that is the current city-owned property. And right now, you can see that's a satellite, there's composting that's been going on there right now, Lake Shore Boulevard along here, Wright Street. And the work that the city has been doing has been in response to the Michigan Department of Environmental Qualities' request to evaluate conditions on the site. One of the things in particular that the DQ is concerned about is not only what's on the site, but what, if anything, is getting off the site. So to do that, there's been monitoring wells put in on various locations onsite, as well as what are called GSI wells, or groundwater-surface-water interface wells, that are put in right near the lake. And we'll talk about those more in a little bit. There have been a lot of environmental response activities that the city has done. Quite some time ago, in the year 2000, the city did some initial assessment with the Tri Media Consulting firm to evaluate current conditions that were along the lake. Since that time, there's been a lot more work that's happened when the DQ renewed their request for additional investigation. And from 2009 on, there's been a lot of work that the city has commissioned, which has included both in-site monitoring wells and nearshore monitoring wells to evaluate the conditions of the groundwater interior of the site and conditions of the groundwater as it's going off the site. There also was what we've characterized as a limited source removal that was done. One of the difficulties about working on a site like this is there's a lot of rubble. There's old buildings, there's foundations, there's just a bunch of stuff still in the ground. And when you want to assess the condition of the subsurface, one of the ways to do it is to use a piece of equipment and put a pipe down or drill a hole into the ground and take out a soil sample. You can do that if you can get down through the ground, but if you hit big pieces of foundation or things like that, it's real difficult. So to try and make the city's money go in the right direction farther, we had a geophysical study done, which uses non-invasive techniques, like electromagnetic techniques and ground-penetrating radar, and things that can allow the scientists to draw some conclusions about what's underground without actually having to punch holes in the ground. As a result of that work, there were some areas on the site that were identified as preferential pathways. And there's an area, part of the site, where there used to be some buildings, and there's an area that goes out towards the lake, where it appeared as if that was a potential conduit for onshore or onsite materials to be moving towards the lake. So we did what was called this limited, and you can't see that here, limited source removal, where a lot of material was taken off the site. And some of you may remember pictures from the Mining Journal, where there was actual tar that was coming out of some of the pipes that were all left below ground. So that was something that was done to assist in eliminating ongoing sources of chemicals that could be leaching to the groundwater. It was not an approach to say, we're going to dig up all the site and take it someplace else. It was simply, here's an area where we could identify some larger quantities of material, and we could go in with a more surgical approach to take some of those out. We evaluated for the City Commission, and by we, I mean the project team, which is Tri Media, myself, an attorney, and the director of planning, Dennis Stackwitz, evaluated various alternatives. We presented those to the City Commission about a year ago, I think that was, looking at some of the various options. You know, and there's kind of the good, fast, and cheap, pick any two of them. You know, you could go in and spend a gazillion dollars and dig up the entire site, but that's not a really good use of taxpayer money based on not having anything in particular that the site's going to be used for right now. So we evaluated options and we presented those to the City Commission. Since that time, we've been doing more groundwater monitoring and evaluating that information. Now, one of the challenges with groundwater data, like any other data, is it bounces around. And you might have a low level, and then a high level, and then a mid level, and then back and forth and back and forth. And depending on whether you're looking in a very snapshot period, like, here's today's data. If we went out today and we got levels, we know what they are, and they're, you know, A, B, or C. If you compare that with a week ago, or a month ago, or a year ago, or 20 years ago, the farther back you go, the better off you're able to identify trends. And so Mylan Kosky, who's here today, Mylan could raise your hand, so if anyone knows, will know who he is. He's our main scientist on this project from Tri Media, and he did some statistical studies using what's called the Man Kendall Analysis, which is a DQ-approved method to evaluate the data. And he looked at some of the data short-term, and some of the data midterm, and some of the data long-term, to try and eliminate some of the noise. And that's important because it's really the trends that we're interested in, in addition to whatever we're seeing today. And when I talk about today's data or otherwise, depending on the period of time, samples have been taken either quarterly, or twice a year, or even at longer periods. So as we've been able to narrow down portions of the site that were of some concern, that is having levels of dissolved contaminants in the groundwater that were such that the DQ wanted more information, we're able to start restricting how many wells are sampled and on what frequency, which is a good thing because it saves money and it helps narrow down the areas of the site where we particularly need to focus. And so in looking at the data, the data, you know, it goes up and down. If you look at some of the data, it shows that it's stable or that we've got declining trends. Other data shows that you've got, you know, either indeterminate, or possibly increasing, or possibly decreasing. Now, the real issue that we're focused on is these wells that are right along the shore. And this GSI number here stands for Groundwater-Surface Water Interface. And these are wells that were put in, in a location near to, that is very near to, where temporary wells were put in the year 2000 at the request of the city. So when the DNR, rather, DQ wanted to have the city do further investigation, additional wells were put in, and they go all up and down the shore there. You can see 900A down there, 100 somewhere in the center, and then 300 down at the bottom. That's looking at what is coming in, in the area where you still have what would be characterized as groundwater, but it hasn't gotten to the lake, which would be characterized as surface water. So they can't be right, with their feet wet, right at the very shore. They have to be back a little bit. So what's underground there, that water, is reflecting what's coming from the site and is not what's been diluted by the lake. And so it's these wells from the site, and is not what's been diluted by the lake. And so it's these wells, these GSI wells, that have been the particular focus. Going back to the trends, this is just an example of short-term, how VOCs, volatile organic compounds, there's some of the chemicals that are at the site, they bounce up and down. The numbers aren't critically important for this discussion, they're just shows that there's changes. They're up, they're down, they're, you know, up a little bit. Short-term trends also for semi-volatile organic compounds, or SVOCs, those tend to be materials that have higher boiling points than the volatile organic compounds. Some of them can be what are referred to as DNAPLs, or denser, non-aqueous phase liquids. They might be sinkers rather than floaters. And those trends bounce around also. The midterm analysis, again, showed some are going up, some are going down, a number of things are stable, but it's a way to try to evaluate what we're seeing from the data that's being generated. Now, spreading out the data points gives you another picture, and this is going from 2009 here, all the way to 2014. Total VOCs, adding all of these various chemicals together, taking the average, Mylan comes up with a number, and again, they bounce around. It generally looks reasonably stable, you know, the farther back you get. And that, you can see how looking at a longer stretch of the data helps to eliminate some of the noise. If we just look at right here, oh my gosh, it's really high, and then it's way down, and it's up again, you know, it's harder to tell. When you see where it is from 2009 to present, you can sort of, you know, see where that's going. And it's not doing hugely dramatic changes. Semi-volatiles, more noise in the data, more variation, but a similar type of thing. So now, we get to the point where we're looking farther back. 2000, here, these are different wells, but they're in the same location, significantly higher. So since then to present, looking at Mylan, the last three data points, the last three times the wells were sampled, that would be the average, a significant decrease, an 82% decrease in the amount of dissolved contaminants that are migrating towards the lake. That's for the VOCs. The SVOC is slightly better, an 89% decrease. So, we still have, I'll go back here. We still have some number in between, from 2000 here up to present. We still have higher points in the center, in terms of, you saw that near-term data, but also, we have higher levels of contamination interior of the site than we do that are getting right towards the lake, and we'll discuss that in just a moment. So, conclusions that Tri Media came up with for the data trends. Most of the VOCs at the GSI wells are decreasing. The SVOCs are bouncing around somewhat. The interior wells, some are decreasing, some are increasing, a bunch of them you can't really tell. SVOCs, similar types of things, but you do have more increasing. So you've got two issues here, migration and attenuation. So migration is we've got dissolved contaminants midway in the site, in those areas where they're doing a lot of process equipment, you know, had retorts, things like that. Those levels in the groundwater are significantly higher than what we're seeing nearshore. So we have attenuation, that is to say, something is preventing or breaking down the material, because we're not seeing a linear route, you know, we're not seeing the same levels that were mid-site all the way at the shore. And so that can be a function of a couple of things. Either the chemicals are absorbing or being attracted to particles of clay or materials, you know, organic materials that are in the soil matrix. You also have dilution, because you've got more groundwater coming in there, or potentially you have natural breakdown of materials through microorganisms, because, you know, many things can use something else as a food source. So, all three of those can be in play. The takeaway from this is that the, there's a significant decrease between the levels of dissolved contaminants mid-site than what's actually getting to the nearshore area along the lake. Based on now having some data from 2000 to present, but particularly a lot of data from 2009 to present, we're looking at approaching the DEQ and asking for a mixing zone determination that does some evaluation from scientific methodology to see if there can be some administrative closure for portions of the site based on what's actually moving off-site. So if you think of you've got a drop of something that wouldn't be very good if you were to just put it in your mouth, but if you dilute that with, you know, 10,000 gallons of water, it may not make any difference. Well, here, when you have dissolved contaminants that are near the lake, by the time they get to the lake, you're allowed to use a calculation, and actually, the state does quite a bit of this, to evaluate, is there going to be any significant human health or environmental effect by materials leaving the site? And so we have enough data that we're looking at doing the mixing zone determination for part of that. We also, in conjunction with discussions with the DEQ, have revised the strategy for sampling the wells. Originally, when the DEQ wanted to see everything on the site, they wanted to look from top to bottom to see what was going to the lake. After getting enough data over a number of years, we're able to ratchet that down and ratchet that down until we can just focus on the areas where we're having exceedances. So, one of the things that we talked about at the work session, and that I'll mention again now, is when we look at the overall site, and this now, this whole thing here represents city-owned property, and these blue lines, it may be hard to see, they're blue, but trust me, they are, blue lines that are going up and down like that, simply represent different elevations of groundwater. So if you put a well into the ground, and you measure where that water level is, based on, you know, this location, and then another point in this location, you're able to determine either by direct measurement or by interpolation, what the elevation of that water is. And the water, the top of the water table gets lower, and gets lower, and gets lower as it gets towards the lake, as you'd expect, because the groundwater's migrating towards the lake. So this is an elevation, 606 feet above sea level, down to 603 feet. So that's all those show here. What we're looking at is for the north portion of the site and the south portion of the site, to request that the DEQ approve some other action on behalf of the city. For instance, on the southern portion of the site, we're looking at approaching them for a no-further-action determination, saying the city doesn't need to do anything else there. And that's based on data that we've obtained, particularly from that GSI 300A well, which is right down in the north corner of that portion of the site. On the top portion of the site, we're looking at asking them for a mixing zone determination, which I talked about a little bit earlier. The idea, again, is if the DEQ says, "Okay, fine, you've got administrative closure there, because you have enough data to show that there is no adverse effect on human health or the environment," that that puts that property in a better position to be put back to beneficial reuse. And we're having discussions about actually, if those things are accomplished, or accomplishable, then dividing the property out. The city owns the entire parcel, dividing that into 11-acre parcel on the south, and a 14-acre nominally parcel on the north, and then focus on the center parcel where we still have some exceedances, and there's still more information that needs to be gathered. So, again, those are things that might help in terms of putting the property back to reuse. And before I go back to the, thank you there. One of the other things that we've talked about in the earlier work session is when the city acquired the property, there were restrictive covenants that were put onto the property. And one of the things the DEQ is concerned about is, is there a pathway that is complete? So, an example, if you have groundwater that's got levels of chemicals in it, and someone's drinking the groundwater, that pathway would be complete. In this location, not only is there city water, which would help make that pathway not complete, but there's a restrictive covenant on the property that says you can't use that groundwater for a beneficial purpose, which is extremely common in any areas where you've got contaminated groundwater, even when you have city water available. You say, "Anyone who buys that property can't use that groundwater." That helps make that pathway not be complete, so people aren't exposed. In terms of potential further reuse, there might be things considered, such as restricting the amount of digging that people could do in the site. And in fact, if Lake Shore Boulevard ends up getting relocated inland, there might be additional fill that's brought into the site if that project goes forward, and that also further helps there. So, there's a lot of potential for things that can be done with the site, and this is just sort of a summary of the progress that's been made in terms of taking a large amount of data and trying to boil that down to some areas to present to the DEQ and allow for some further activities. Is there anything else that we should cover for this update?
No, I just, I can add really quickly that people may be interested in what the exact next steps are for the city. We will be moving forward and working with the city commission and Brownfield Authority to implement some of the things that are presented here this evening within the coming year. So, thank you very much for your time, and that's the update.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Ryan?
I don't really have a question, but I just want to say, thanks for the report. I think it's been very positive since the city started working with Rich and with Tri Media, and obviously, the staff has provided strong support here. So, I think after kind of languishing for a number of years, that we've made some really good progress in the last five years, and I think that's really important.
Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Well, I'd like to echo Commissioner Ryan's sentiments. I think Mr. Barron and certainly Mylan Kosky from Tri Media have helped us bridge this gap with the MDEQ, along with our staff, to get us to a point where we're communicating, and there's an understanding, and we're moving forward and making quite a bit of progress. So I'd just like to thank everyone involved on that.
I was only going to say, there really is light at the end of the tunnel. And it's good to see it, I think, that we're moving as long as rapidly, and I think effectively as we have, and I want to thank everybody involved in the process. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Well, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the good news. We've been waiting many, many years for improvement here, and as Commissioner Stonehouse said, perhaps there's light at the end of the tunnel, or the tunnel's not as long as we thought. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation on the Iron Range Roll Recreation Event by Forty Below Young Professionals Market County, a board member, David Nyberg, and another presenter that David will introduce to us.
Thank you for your patience. My name is Dave Nyberg. I'm a board member with the Forty Below Young Professionals of Marquette County. I'd like to, first of all, just say thank you to the commission for your time and the opportunity to present. This is an informational presentation. And special thanks to staff, staff for the city have been especially helpful in getting us down the right path, Carl Zugger in particular. So, thank you. I'm going to do the bulk of the presentation, but I'd like to introduce Ryan Numla as our president for Forty Below.
Thank you, Your Honor, fellow staff, friends and citizens. As Dave just said, my name is Ryan Numla. I'm president of Market County Young Professionals Organization. We're an organization here in the community that, and really, the countywide, that's been around since the year 2010. And we're here tonight to talk about a very fun, exciting, and engaging event that we plan on hosting coming up this summer, that's going to connect all the communities in the county for a good civic cause, to give back to a great organization at the YMCA. You know, we realize the importance of giving back. We also realize that the future of not only Marquette City, but of all the communities, that thrives on young professionals as we grow into leadership roles, and we engage and grow in our careers. So, with that being said, back to Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Sure. Thanks, Ryan. So you can see on the slide there, Market County YPs Forty Below was founded in 2010 as a venue for professional development and networking. Organization continues to evolve and develop like a lot of organizations do. We're, you know, four years down the road now, I became a board member last year. One of the reasons I became a board member is because I thought that our organization could do some more than we were already doing. And this is one of those opportunities to provide more dynamic events for recreation and connecting communities in Market County. You'll see, we revised our mission statement there. There's some new words in there that weren't there a year ago, or two years ago. "To connect the working professionals of Market County under the age of 40 through networking, professional development, civic engagement, and social recreational opportunities." We did a membership survey last year. One of the things we recognize is our members wanted more than just professional development and networking. They wanted to, they wanted to do events with the communities that kind of epitomize why they live in Marquette. And we all know that Marquette offers exceptional recreation opportunities. When I say Marquette, I mean the county, but the city in particular as well. Civic engagement, so our members, a lot of Gen Yers, if you're familiar with the term, have a, have a very passionate desire to volunteer and give back to the community, and they live in communities like Marquette, not because of their careers, but because of where it is and what it's all about. So, that's the reason why they joined Market County YPs, was, or Forty Below, rather, was to be a part of something that gives back to the community. So we're trying to provide more of this, more of this to our membership, and we're being responsive to that survey. And this, and this event's kind of our first undertaking for that. So the vision for this event kind of started as a conversation, well, how do we do this? And because Market County really is about recreation, especially for young people, we wanted to create a signature recreation-based event that happens annually, that adds to our region's quality of life and gives back to the community, promotes healthy living, and it also brings people together throughout the county. We recognize that we're a big county, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of similarity about the people that, and the communities in the county, but there's also a lot of unique differences as well, and differences that we should celebrate. So we wanted this event really to connect communities and be something that the whole county could be proud of. So what we came up with, we have this trail system called the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. And it really, it really is, it jumped out on paper to us. We thought of a lot of other things, and we actually, actually kind of set aside the idea of doing a 5K or 10K at first, because we thought that maybe the running, you know, races, there's a lot of them, there's one every weekend. It's a great thing, and that's a great asset to the community, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. But the Iron Ore Heritage Trail is really truly unique, and there really isn't an annual event on the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. So we wanted to make good use of that trail. That trail connects a lot of great communities in Marquette, and we wanted it to be on the trail and to be able to feature that. So we approached Carol Fulcher at the trail, and she talked to the board, and that's what we decided on. So what is this event? What's the Iron Range Roll? There's our logo there, you can see we put some time and thought into that. It starts in Ishpeming, as you might imagine, from the logo, at the Cliffshaft Mine Museum. It's a trailhead on the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, and it ends down here at Marquette Commons. We're in discussions with the DDA about specifically where that might end, because it happens on a Saturday, and there's a lot of activity going on in the city. We want to make sure that we're being mindful of everybody's safety and the convenience of other events that are going on. For all intents and purposes, when we advertise this event, we're saying Cliffshaft Museum to Marquette Commons, just to provide commonality. And those are both trailheads on the trail. So this is a 16-mile point-to-point run. We meant, we mean it to be fun. We mean it to be all-inclusive for people of all ages and abilities. We envision families out there doing this, whether you're running it, whether you're putting a relay team together, or whether you're putting a bike team together. We learned from the NMU Cycling Club that they're really excited about this and doing teams of four, and really aggressively riding this event, because it's something completely unique. So, putting a bike team together, or whether you're deciding to bike the, bike the race yourself. One of the, one of the cool things about this, it's an early-season event. Everybody's kind of getting into the groove of recreation in June. It's all downhill. That's the beauty of it. When you see the elevation profile, you know what we're talking about. So, 16 miles sounds like a lot, but it really is. It's downhill, and it really, it really promotes the beauty of our county. And the other unique thing about this is that the Marquette Marathon's planning to switch their race course to the Iron Ore Heritage Trail later in the season. So this could be, this could be a great preview for Marquette Marathon trainees to kind of get a preview of the course and try it out at a lower mileage rate. So there's three ways to participate. I already kind of mentioned it, I got ahead of myself there, myself there. You can, you can, you can bike the rates, that's the ride portion. You can do a relay team or a bike team, or you can run it individually. And obviously, we're going to be starting the bicyclists first. They're going to get done a little bit before everybody else, I think. Key part about this is the proceed, and this is what it's all about, giving back. We, our Forty Below really connected to a program that's new here in Market County. You might have seen some news about it recently on the, on the, on the news or in the paper. It's called Reach and Rise. It's one of only two programs for the national YMCA to get it, and the state, and one of them's here in Market County. And it is a youth mentoring program. And we have a lot of people in our organization that want to be mentors, so we thought this was a good dovetail to that organization. And if we can, if we can cut them a check at the end of this, if we can make a few bucks, that would be great. So, the event's on Saturday, June 7th, starts registration at 9:00 AM. This is a day-long event, and we're going to start it off at 11:00 AM. We're going to sweep the, we're going to sweep the trail at 2:30 and make sure everybody's safe and everybody's good. And we're going to have an award celebration at the Oradoc Brewing Company. That's just down the street from the finish, so it should be some great, some great imagery there, too. This is, you know, we're ending at the, we're ending at the Commons, but the Oradoc really is on our logo, and it's, it's kind of, kind of the vision that we're trying to have for this entire event. Here's the route. that we're trying to have for this entire event. Here's the route. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, we decided to do our relay intervals at trailheads. And there's some convenience factor added to this, but we also really wanted to showcase the trail. And the trailheads are there for a reason. They're showcasing unique places in our community. And it's a great way for people to congregate and cheer along, or for our partners and sponsors to put up a tent, give away some goodies, or put a concession there if they'd like. We really envisioned this being a celebration along the entire trail. Specifically, like I said, we're starting from Cliff Shaft Mine Museum. The first relay leg, or the second relay leg will be at, excuse me, the first one will be at Old Town Park in Nagani, right by the senior center. So we're starting in Ishpeming. First relay location's in City Nagani. The second relay leg will be in Nagani Township, or the second relay portion will be in Nagani Township at the Iron Industry Museum. The third relay leg will be at Schwimwood Park in Market Township. And then the finish will be at the Market Commons. So we're hitting every jurisdiction along that trail, which is kind of cool, at least in the vicinity from Ishpeming to Market. We're branding this as, for the relay teams in particular, because it, this is kind of what's cool about the race. It's unique. The relay distances are unique because we're doing them at trailheads. We're marking it as, all you need is three 5Kers and one 10Ker. So you have one workhorse, and then you get three 5Kers to do it, and that adds some variety as well. You have somebody who might be really into the racing, and some people who just want to get out there for fun. There is that elevation profile. That's why it's called the Roll. And don't look at the whole graph. Look at where Ishpeming starts and look at where we're ending. So that's a thousand-foot descent over 16 miles. That's pretty cool. That's what we're hoping will attract people to do it. Why are we doing it? We already talked about this a little bit. It's all, excuse me, it's to promote healthy living and family-friendly recreation on the asset we call the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, promote fun and modest competition. So this is a fun race, but we're getting it timed. So it's going to, we're hoping people will come back next year and the year after that with bragging rights, trying to beat their timer, beat their friends. So that's why we're having it timed. It also promotes our heritage and connectivity between our communities in Market County. And of course, the main reason is to raise support for a great cause. So 75% of those proceeds will go to Reach and Rise, like we talked about. We're going to retain 25% of those so we have a good head start on next year. So Forty Below has a community fund. The community fund will be mostly composed of the Iron Range Roll event, but we also do an adopt a family in the winter. So 25% will go to our community fund. This is the visual we're looking for. It's all about getting kids on bikes, kids on the trail with their mom and dad, or grandpa and grandma, and friends and family. So it's a beautiful section right along the trail that we're hoping people will enjoy on this race. That's what it's all about. Here's some information about the Reach and Rise program. I already talked about that a little bit. For the sake of time, I just encourage you to look up Reach and Rise online if you'd like more information. But Melissa De Mars is on our Planning Task Force Committee. She's wonderful. If you'd like more information about it, it's a side way to advertise that program. If you think you'd like to be a mentor, if you know somebody who'd like to be a mentor, there's Melissa's email. Or you could email me as well. We'll connect you. IronRangeRoll.com is where you can register. That site's live. We're still tweaking it, improving it a little bit, but we want people to go on there and register. And there'll be some more, there'll be some more dynamic content on there to talk about the race, and so everybody can see what it's all about and kind of get a one-snap glimpse of what I just presented to you. But you can go to IronRangeRoll.com, and that's being redirected to the Market County CVB. They've been gracious enough to partner with us on this event, and they're hosting our registration. That's it. Thank you for my, thank you for your time. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the commission may have.
Questions? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I'd just like to thank Dave for coming forward and presenting this. It sounds awesome. I'm at the tail end of the Gen X generation, so close, yeah. But I was thinking maybe we could get a commission team out there, although we might need a handicap with all the surgeries all of us have had lately. But, you know, it's just something to digest. Might be fun. So again, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'd just like to say I don't qualify to belong to the Forty Below group. I belong to the Way Above Forty group. But it's a great organization. It really is. And it's, as Dave mentioned, it's fairly new. But I know they have a lot of membership, a lot of active people. And I think it's really good for our community to have young professionals actively involved in creating not only events like this, but, you know, serving in many other ways. So congratulations.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Campana?
I think you guys have a really good event here. I think it's going to, you're going to be surprised at how well it grows. 5K and 10K are very doable, so you're going to get a big turnout. And it just looks like, you know, you're getting people out, and you get them moving and exercising, and that's a good thing. And the second thing is, you're going to expose people to the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, which is a really beautiful trail. And a lot of people haven't seen it yet. So it's all going to be good. So good luck with it, and I'm sure you'll do well.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I was just thinking, kind of parroting on what Commissioner Campana said, that really it's unique from the standpoint that it's going to be a great race, and it's attracting certainly a great crowd of people for a great event and a great reason. But by putting them on the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, we also are drawing attention to that national-level trail that really tells the history of our iron range and why we are here, and then in part of why we became what we became. So I think that's a terrific combination, and I applaud you for doing it. Thank you.
That was a big goal of the race, to provide the heritage along the trail, so people can see all that.
It's fantastic. It's just going to be a winner.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. City Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas national service participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities from educating students for their jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from national disasters, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1st, 2014. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert Neamy, Mayor of the City of Market, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities, dated this 31st day of March, 2014.
Thank you, City Clerk. And we also have a number of national volunteers who are serving in our community that we'd like to recognize. If they'd meet me at the ceremonial podium, please? Okay, we've got a number of certificates. Christina L. Warden, thank you for your service. And Katie Mann. Thank you. Thank you, Katie. And Kelly Feister, Feaster?
Feaster, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Katie. And Jean Sekely, or Sekley, how is that pronounced?
Sekley.
Sekley, okay, thank you. Thank you. Kimberly Conrad, thank you. Catherine Phillips, thank you. And Diane Jarvey must be right here. Thank you. As mayor, I'm pleased to be able to proclaim this National Recognition Day and join the other mayors in the country. And thank you for your service. Would any of you like to say a few words?
This is my, this is actually my second year as an AmeriCorps member, and I just want to encourage anybody that has any interest in joining in a program like this. It's been a wonderful experience. We're working in the schools, doing literacy tutoring, and just encourage anybody, I can't, I can't be in the Forty Below club. We've got people from, you know, college age all the way up into the senior corps, and it's just been a great experience. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. And certainly, our community is better off with your service, and we certainly appreciate it and recognize you. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess I'll stay up here. We do have a new member to welcome to the Aging Services Committee, Jessie Rosten. If you would please come up. Welcome, Jessie. Jessie is our newest member of the Aging Services Advisory Committee. We'd like to recognize her, and I'd like to welcome you to the Aging Advisory Committee. Would you like to say a few words?
Not much, no. Just thank you to the commission. Nice to meet you all, and hopefully to the public. I'm here to give a good voice to our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. Our city benefits so much from volunteers. We appreciate it. And next, I have a recognition outgoing member, Jackie Lightens, for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Is Jackie present? Would you join me up here, please? We have a certificate here to present to you, recognizing your service on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And we also have a shirt and city pin to present to you. And we certainly appreciate your years of service. As I mentioned, our city can't operate without the volunteers, and it's an integral part of our city government. And, you know, we ran out of adjectives to describe our appreciation for the services that our volunteers make. Would you like to say anything?
In the case of the Parks and Recs Department, I think a lot of the recognition has to go beyond the members. You know, we have a daunting task to create a five-year recreation plan. So we spend months being prodded along, trying to meet our deadlines, friendly prodding, but prodding nevertheless. And we come up with the great plans and hand it to the city's staff and say, now figure out how to pay for it. And it was a pretty expensive undertaking this year that we had wanted to spend to improve the recreation with the city, within the city, I'm sorry. And obviously, the commission funded a great portion of it. But I think, you know, the majority of the funding for what's been our plan has come from grants, natural resources grants. And without the assistance of Carl Zuger and his staff, we would have never been successful in getting those grants. I think Market probably rates in the top in the state for the success and the amount of the grants that we have. And, you know, where it was the committee's, you know, undertaking to make the plan, it was Carl and his staff who succeeded in making the plan work and being able to fund some of the things that were even talked about today for recreation within the community. And I think that recognition needs to go to the city staff that made this all possible.
Thank you, Ms. Lightens.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your service. Okay, the next item on our agenda, again, regarding boards and commissions, we have some appointments. We have Ruby Padakis to the Elections Board for a term beginning 4/11/14 and ending April 11, 2018. And William Brazier to the Sister City Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2017. Fall Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding these appointments? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we appoint Ruby Padakis and William Brazier to the terms described by the mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
I have a second motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Stonehouse, to appoint Ruby Padakis to the Elections Board for a term expiring April 11, 2018, and William Brazier to the Sister City Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2017. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only my thanks.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, six to zero. The next is reappointments of William Thompson to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2017, and Terry Rockwood to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2017. Fall Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I move that we reappoint William Thompson and Terry Rockwood to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee for terms ending on April 1st, 2017.
Thank you, Commissioner Benzey. Is there a second to motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Benzey, second by Commissioner Reynolds, to make the appointments as listed to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee. Anything further, Commissioner Benzey?
Nothing further.
Anything further, Commissioner Reynolds?
No, nothing further.
Any other commissioners? Hearing none, I call the question. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or yes, excuse me. And any opposed, say no. The motion is passing unanimously, six to zero. Thank you.
Old habits die hard, huh?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making the comments. And if commenters would address us from the podium in front of the dais. Anyone wishing to address the commission?
Rita Hodgins, Fortuna County, Market. For over 10 years, I was able to gain invaluable insight through my facilitation of this strategic planning process for the city of Market. Pardon me, I'm Corbin, Corson. In preparation for goal-setting for the coming year, people in the community were invited to take part in public forums held in the city's chambers. The room was packed, overflowing with citizens. They spoke about many city services, but they spoke loudly and clearly that Lake Shore property within the city remained undeveloped.
Okay, thank you. I recall that the number-one goal for one of the years was to purchase any and all remaining or available Lake Superior shoreline. This included the four remaining homes on the shoreline, and that these homes be torn down. Over time, 25 additional acres along Lake Superior shoreline were added to city ownership, the former railroad yards. It took much effort to make this a reality. Planning meetings garnering public input took place over a number of years. And again, the voice of our citizens was no buildings on the east side of Lake Shore Boulevard. There was a concession made for the north end of the property to allow commercial development to serve as a connector to the downtown while remaining waterfront, while maintaining waterfront for the public. Two public pavilions were proposed for founders landing on the east side of Lake Shore Boulevard. The footings for the north pavilion were poured, although full approval had not been received. The Board of Zoning Appeals turned down the request by a unanimous vote. The footings were capped, and this is where the public bathrooms, the storage room, and viewing platform currently exist. Neither building was ever built. Additionally, a concrete pad that consisted of a bike rack and trash can that was built on the east side of Lake Shore Boulevard has been removed. It appears that the city commission followed the vetting process in voting voting to allow a private nonprofit to build a very large building on city Lake Shore property east of Lake Shore Boulevard. My purpose for speaking with you is that your vote doesn't represent the previously received input
You need to conclude your remarks.
From the citizens of this city. I just have a couple more. Now, I can only speculate that they are unaware for whatever reason about this very large building you've approved of on our shoreline. What I fear is that once the trees begin to fall and realization hits, you could be under siege. I say this for a couple-
You're over time. You need to-
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else wishing to address the commission?
My name is Louise Reichert. I live at 907 Adams Street, and I just want to say a large, huge thank you to the people that maintain tourist park during the winter. For those of us who are dog walkers, it's been a godsend, and I think this year, especially with all the snow, all the crappy weather, there is no other place to walk in town, and we all really appreciate it, and we want those folks recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reichert. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
John Sandrigger, 515 Spruce Street in Marquette. I'm here to speak on the rowing club building. I was surprised to see the action taken by the city commission regarding that. I feel the commission should rescind its direction to counsel regarding creation of a license, and I applaud Commissioner Benzi's vote on the, on the subject. The public waterfront is the cornerstone of the South Shore redevelopment, and a great deal of effort went into building this development plan. I ride my bike along that stretch of waterfront five days a week when it's not snow-covered, and rain or shine, I see fellow cyclists, walkers, runners enjoying the secluded view across the fallow land to the vast expanse of Superior. The careful planning has created real value. Market City taxpayers quite literally bought and paid for this land. I can't imagine a rationale where giving it away to a private club makes sense. And I'm by no means anti-rowing, and I've been out rowing on the shelves several occasions. But I've got too many sports and too little time, and I hope a day comes when I can partake in more sports. I should add that swimming, and kayaking, and canoeing, and sunfishing, and catamaran sailing, and stand-up paddleboard, windsurfing, and kiteboarding are also on that list. So, I'm sure all these clubs are watching how this plays out. So, if this agreement does take place, I'm sure all these clubs are going to be coming, asking for the same thing. So, I, I trust after careful review, you'll change your mind on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sandrigger. Anyone else else wishing to address the commission?
I'm Cam Benzi, 306 North Sixth Street, and I'm going to read fast because we only got three minutes. I, too, in the last three weeks since your last meeting, have looked into that proposal to build the rowing club building in the proposal location. I went through the Planning Commission minutes and, and all of their documents completely, and I am really opposed to that site. I think it needs to be moved north, close to where the motel is located. Okay, number one. This is the waterfront form-based code zoning in that district. The zoning is what's called Waterfront Recreation Conservation, WRC. It says the intent, "The sub-district includes lands located along waterfront and shoreline areas that are preserved for community recreational and conservation purposes and valued for scenic and ecological qualities. The intent is to promote public access and enjoyment of water resources and to protect those same resources through responsible stormwater management and land use practices. In this way, the community recognizes the unique physical, economic, and social benefits of waterfront and shoreline properties." Guiding principles right in your ordinance, no private development permitted. Okay, and we go on from there. Well, this is a nonprofit organization. If you look at the IRS guidelines and you read those, it's not a charitable organization. It's a club. It's a private club. And the definition of nonprofit organizations is an organization that uses surplus revenues to achieve its goals rather than distributing them as profit or dividends. While not-for-profit organizations are permitted to generate surplus revenues, they must be retained by the organization for its self-preservation, expansion, or plans. They are just that. They are basically a private club. Now, probably anybody can join them, but what they're going to do is for the use of 100 members now, maybe the membership doubles, 200 members, the Northern Rowing Club, they're going to take up 300 feet of the frontage that's down there. It needs to go north by the motel. Public, last time I was up here, I said there's not enough parking. Comments were made that if they're healthy enough to row, they can, they can walk to the site. It's not going to happen. There's 24 parking spaces in that whole mile-long stretch of Founder's Landing. It's not sufficient. If they do it up by the motel, the city parking lot is just on the other side of where the old ordock is, an easy walk. I guess that's enough comments.
Thank you.
It needs to be moved.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Thanks, Jeffert, 20350 and a half East Wood Marquette. These are my opinions. Only Cam Benzi, the sole member with planning expertise, opposed the boathouse site. Her question on using the pilings isn't to be confused with the ideal site, the rower's current preferred spot. You purposely neglected to explain why this site wasn't considered, bolstering Laurie's claim that your choice was political instead of based on sound land use and lake shore preservation. An active boathouse there is not a quiet tenant, as a rower claimed, and her claim that nothing will change on the beach is an unintended lie. They're too focused on their cause to see forest through trees. The peace of that natural area will change drastically because six of you lack the vision to operate in this capacity. Your failure to consider the north site is indicative of a flagrant lack of integrity. Neme said he likes seeing skulls on the water. We all do, and we all want the boathouse, thus most of the testimony was a waste. The site of the skulls, the history of rowing, the NMU aspects, accessibility, health, fitness, all the above is best achieved at the north location, as is parking and walk distance, Mr. Neme. Your own planner said the lines and pump need to run from west of the Boulevard, which isn't an issue at the current site. When Coyne stated that if boaters can row, they can walk, he failed to account for people with disabilities, a doctor of all people. These oversights only add to our documented instances of sheer stupidity. March 10, Ryan suggested that Coyne's motion was premature. In truth, Coyne was so bent on filing the motion, he'd pre-written it. He motioned right away to assure himself of being named the culprit who'd rape a woodland without the decency to consider a better known location. Rushing his selfish name onto the motion meant more to him than slowing down to do it right. Ryan knows this tactic so well, he likely complained because he wanted his name on the motion, as documented October 28 on the BLP increase, January 9, 2012, on County Road 595, and November 28, 2011, on the Parks and Rec Plan. In fact, last May 13, he wrote a motion on the bed and breakfast ahead of time, just as Coyne did March 10. You know, flagrant hypocrisy. Even Kivola said on July 30, 2012, that Ryan should get a medal for his motion-making. We're witnessing the battle of two competing hotshots who endeavor to name themselves on maximum number of motions. Both believe they're the hottest items in the hamlet, when the truth is they're among the most despised outside of their big money circle. To the contrary, there's Campana, a great guy, but a fish out of water in here. Your attorney, another nice guy, didn't know the location as clearly depicted in his agenda packet. And Neme claimed the site will be improved, a jewel for the crown, in his word. The crown jewel is there right now. He just can't see it. You're oblivious to the value of a natural place.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission?
Daryl Davis, 145 Bayou Road. Tonight, I have my rowing club hat on. I've been asked to give you a quick update from the club as we continue to work toward a licensing agreement with the city. We're excited that the proposed boathouse, the result of various city planning activities dating back 10 years, will be a true community resource with not only a range of rowing programs for youth and adults, but also water access, launching, and storage options for other paddle sports, including adaptive rowing. As we established in our proposal to the commission and previous presentations to the Harbor Committee and Planning Commission, the proposed site is really the most feasible one. As I coached Northern's crew for its first eight years, I spent a lot of time looking at water and what's rowable water and what isn't. I won't bore you with the details of the problems of the various other sites that have been suggested, but I would be glad to provide that information to anybody who would like to have it. I want to assure you that as members of the community ourselves, members of the UP Community Rowing Club, are very sensitive to our role as stewards of the waterfront. After all, over the last 10 years, we've spent more time looking at that waterfront from the water than probably anybody else, and we'll be very careful to do nothing to detract from its natural beauty. Since we've been rowing adjacent to the proposed location for the past 10 years now, with no adverse effects on traffic or anything else, we don't anticipate any change in the parking situation in the area. Our proposed storage facility, as you have seen in the proposal, but a lot of other people haven't had a chance really to see yet, has been designed by a local architectural firm. It's designed to be tucked into the hillside below the bike paths, so it will not interfere with the viewscape from Lake Shore Boulevard toward the lake, and its natural grassy flat roof will be an overlook for the public as a viewing platform. Treecutting in preparation for constructing the facility will be minimized, and any trees removed will be replaced with additional planting. Viewed from the lake, the building will be very unobtrusive and is going to nestle into that natural landscape very well. We look forward to working with the commission to complete the licensing agreement. We also plan a presentation for the public in the near future to allow people who have encouraged the project to see how attractive it really is, to get a look at the plans, and to allow those who still have questions or concerns to get those questions and concerns addressed. Anyone interested can now contact the club at our new email address, row.marquette@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else wanting to address the commission, any citizen comment? Seeing none, then we'll close this portion of the meeting, and we'll go on to the consent agenda. Fell Commissioners, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move the consent agenda be approved with the exception of the bills payable.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Cam Benzi. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No, nothing further.
Further, Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Actually, I do. In the minutes, it just has nothing leading up to why I voted no against the rowing club, and I would like to include the questions I asked, as well as that I am supportive of the Marquette Rowing Club, however, not the site, and I just want to make that clear in the minutes.
Okay. Have you submitted those questions to the city clerk?
No, I have them right here. I didn't know if my fellow commissioners would like me to read it or hand it in.
No, I think if you just submit them to him, he can make corrections in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The city manager?
Your honor, just as a point, that wasn't the motion that Commissioner Ryan offered.
Well, that's, yeah, okay. That is part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
No, the comments were part of the consent agenda. I believe to make sure that we're following procedure, that Commissioner Ryan would have to accept Commissioner Cam Benzi's amendment.
Yes.
I'll, I'll accept that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Looking at the attorney with questioning eyes.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Cam Benzi, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the bills payable. All, and any further comment by any commissioners? Then, okay. Then I would call the question. All in favor of the question, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed to the question, say no. The question is approved unanimously. We now have the bills payable, which we must approve. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve payment of the bills as submitted, with the exception of expense reimbursement payments for the Michigan Municipal League to Mayor Neme, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse, and Commissioner Campana.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
Can I just move two of them and move the next one?
Well, but, no, this time, we're not including them.
Consent, pay everything, cycle.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion, Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, right. No, you got me confused, too.
We're approving the bills sans the, the payments to the three commissioners. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Campana, to approve the bills payable with the exception of the, the three reimbursements, myself, Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse, and Commissioner Campana. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is approved, six to zero. Now, we have three payments which we have to deal with. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the payment in reimbursement for travel expenses to Commissioner Campana and Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse.
Is there a second? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I'll support it.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Cam Benzi, to approve payments to Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse and Commissioner Campana. Anything further, commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. The motion is approved, four to zero with two commissioners abstaining. Yeah. Okay, the last is the reimbursement myself.
I would like to move we approve the payment of reimbursement for municipal league expenses to Mayor Neme.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any second to that motion, Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I'll support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Cam Benzi, to approve the reimbursement to the mayor for the, the MML travel. Anything further?
Yes, I would like to say something further. I, I think it's important for the people watching either here or at home to understand, we do this because commissioners are not allowed to vote on payment to themselves. And so, we have to, even though we're, we're paying a million dollars' worth of bills, and we're probably dealing with a couple of hundred dollars or several hundred dollars here, to keep everything proper, we, we have to do it in this manner. So, in case people are sitting home wondering, why are they doing this? This is why we're doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Just to expand on what Commissioner Ryan said a little further, the MML is the Michigan Municipal League. It's our spring conference, and this is what you would call kind of an annual training, reconnection conference that we get to attend, should we. That kind of trains us and informs us of what's going on down in Lansing, and it's one of the most valuable conferences that all of us will get to attend. So, just a little more expansion on what Commissioner Ryan said. It's one of two conferences that all of us try and get to during the year, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cam Benzi. Anything further from any commissioners? Hearing none, I would call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no, and I abstain. So, the motion is approved, five to zero. Thank you. Let's see, the next item we have is now new business. It's a resolution of intent calling a hearing regarding amendment of boundaries of local development finance authority. City clerk, do you have a background item to read, please?
Yes, your honor, thank you. Background, on August 29, 1988, the city commission created a local development finance authority, or LDFA, pursuant to Public Act 281 of 1986. The boundary was established to be the River Park complex. The city- The city and Northern Michigan University have recently been approached by a smart zone district established by the cities of Houghton and Hancock and Michigan Tech University to become a satellite smart zone district. The purpose of such district is to help eliminate the conditions of unemployment, underemployment, and joblessness, and to promote economic growth in the city. In order to accomplish the purposes of a satellite district, the LDFA must be established. Since the city already has an established LDFA, the next step would be for the city to amend the boundaries to include the entire city of Marquette. In order to amend the boundaries, a public hearing must be scheduled and conducted. Fiscal effect done by this action, recommendation, approve a resolution of intent to schedule a public hearing for April 28th, 2014, regarding amendment of boundaries of the local development finance authority, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Well, Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve a resolution of intent to schedule a public hearing for April 28th, 2014, regarding amendment of boundaries of the local development finance authority.
Okay. Is there a second to this? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Yeah, I would just make two points. Number one, what we're doing here is scheduling a public hearing, so there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to have input on this issue. We're not making a decision tonight. But secondly, I think this is part of a real opportunity that we've been offered to participate with Northern Michigan University in a smart zone satellite district. This program has worked very effectively in the copper country with Michigan Tech, and this certainly can be very important going forward. So, I'm sure we'll have more about that in the future, but tonight, we're just scheduling a public hearing.
City Attorney, do we have to approve this by roll call vote?
If it's unanimous, we don't.
Okay, so you can take a vote first and see.
Sure.
Any further, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I can only add that it really is a terrific opportunity, not only for the city of Marquette, Northern Michigan University, but also really for the entire county. The oil drop effect of this can be quite spectacular, I think. So, it's certainly something that's very worth supporting. I look forward to the public hearing, so everybody, I think, can get a better appreciation from it. Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other Commissioners wanting, desiring to comment on this motion? Hearing none, I'd call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is approved unanimously, so. The next item on the agenda is comments from the commission, and we'll start to my left with Commissioner Cam Benzey.
Okay, I'd just, once again, like to thank Mr. Barron and Mr. Kosky for their efforts to help the city work with the MDEQ on the Cliffsdale site. It's a site I remember watching when I was in college with my undergraduate degree with great concern as the superfund site, which is no longer part of this parcel, but it was the one that many remember, that railroad cars and men in completely clothed white suits moving some of that material out of town. And to look from where we've come with selling that site, cleaning it up, and where we're going, I think it's great. And I'd certainly like to thank the city manager for helping motivate his staff to get this going, because in the last three or four years, we've made considerable progress on this, and I'd like to thank everyone involved again on that. The recognition of service, I was an AmeriCorps member, and that is how I currently landed my current job with the market area of public schools as a director of Kaufman Auditorium. So, lots of wonderful stuff from volunteering, and for me, full-time employment came from it, so it was a great opportunity, and I do hope more people partake in that. And lastly, I just hope that there are a few Commissioners that want to be a team for the 40-Below-Iron Range Row. I think that'd be pretty cool, so hopefully more on that to come. Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
First, what Sarah's referring to is walking wounded. She just had her shoulder rebuilt Wednesday, so good that she's here. In the last three, four months, I've had a back surgery and a hip replacement. To my right, Fred had his knee done, correct?
Brand-new.
Brand-new. So, yeah, we've got three, and, oh, we're looking pretty bad here, so I don't know which way we're going. So, yes, we may have a team. On a lighter note, what I experienced tonight was the presentation by the lawyer and about Cliffsdale property. The update goes on to show the efforts of the city to clean up this property and to make it usable and hopefully saleable to outside interest. The indications are that the pollution is being addressed and is being diminished, so hopefully we'll see better things come out of this really prime piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Let me ramble a little bit about the lakeshore. I understand that people are very passionate about our lakeshore, and I think all of us are. We defend it deeply. This is part of what characterizes and defines the city of Marquette, our lakeshore, that we own it, we manage it, it's ours. That's so unlike many other Michigan port communities. But sometimes issues like a boathouse potentially down there gets people excited. They, I think sometimes they pick up some rumors that may not be true, they perhaps get part information or partial information, and this tends to become a much bigger issue than it really should be. So, let me try and put some of that in perspective if I can. In 2004, the Harbor Master Plan did speak to the need for a place on the lakeshore for self-powered craft. We were thinking at that point kayaks and canoes, the rowing yet had not come into fashion. I know that, because I chaired the committee that put that together. So, that's ten years ago. It began to be an item of discussion. In the last couple of years, I know this commission, during commission time, has talked about that opportunity to do something regarding rowing. And again, it was kind of an ill-defined thing. But earlier this year, or late last year, the rowing club did go to the Harbor Advisory Committee with a proposal of how to proceed. The hack looked at it, they passed it on to the Planning Commission, which looked at it further, evaluated it, came to this commission with a recommendation for approval. And we in turn looked at that. We discussed it for over an hour in public session, because the manager's wife is a member of the rowing club. He got up and left this chamber, so he had absolutely nothing to do with that discussion. Because Commissioner Campana's wife is an officer in the club, he too asked the lawyer, our city attorney, "Would this be a conflict of interest if I remained and participated?" And the lawyer said, "No, because it's not a direct financial gain to you, it is fine if you do." And the Commissioner Campana put that out in full public view, so there was absolutely no questions being asked about it. And I remember during our discussion at that time, there was much that involved around public access, how did we assure that, building not blocking views, all of the issues that I think would be on everybody's mind. And as an outcome of that evening, we directed staff to prepare a license agreement with the rowing club. And then, of course, once that license agreement is prepared, if it is, the assumption is it would come back, not the assumption, it will come back to this commission, great discretion, great parsing, great determination, and then a decision will be reached. So, we have yet a road to journey before anybody quickly dumps a private building on our public lakeshore. Lot of discussion, yet certainly to happen. But let me ramble to a little longer view of our lakeshore and what's happened to it over the years. Past commissions for decades, I think we'll go back to the 1980s when we obtained Mattson Park, made very aggressive moves to obtain the public lakeshore for our public, starting with Mattson Park, later, of course, in the Founder's Landing. And I would remind folks, as Rita did, of how the decision was made that everything on the right-hand, on the water side would be public property, everything on the land side, as roughly defined by the road, would be property available for development. And even when we sold the property for the hotel development, that was done very meaningfully, knowing that we still retained a 44-foot public buffer all the way around the waterfront. So, that maintained the boardwalk, that maintained the bike path, and all of that for the public. Very critical. But in the works right now, again, along the same lines of acquiring public property, we have the old lakeshore, the Coast Guard property, about seven and a half acres' worth, and it's been a long journey to get there, and we're getting closer every day, but we're going to have that property. That took a lot of political capital from the city to wrestle with getting the support of two U.S. senators and one U.S. representative to literally cause the Coast Guard to willingly provide that to the city. That was an effort, that's a struggle, but we're going to have it, and I will argue that that is perhaps the best piece of waterfront real estate in the city, and it will be spectacular when we obtain that. Likewise, we're gaining, I think it's 1,600 or 1,800 feet of lakeshore with the Clark's Park project up past Holly Street. That's additional land that will begin, public venue land. You had a presentation earlier this evening that talked about Cliffsdale property. And when you visualize that a little bit, you realize that's 46 acres of land that is arguably adjacent to Lake Superior, and while we technically own that little strip of lakeshore, if we're able to move Lake Shore Boulevard a little bit and expand that a little bit, now we vastly increased, again, the public venue for lakeshore and lakeside property. So, just, again, my effort there is simply to try and keep all of that in perspective, to enjoy and remember the success we had. And perhaps leave you with this comment, or this thought. In the end, everything is a balance. It's a balance of, I'll say, politically competing interests, but I'll say it's a balance, we think, of trying to do the very best we can for the city of Marquette and the public in the city of Marquette. And that's the difficult question that I think all of us will be wrestling with and do wrestle with every meeting, and this is simply an example of that. I thank you for your time and your, oh, before I leave, leave, before I give it up. Mr. Manager, could you give us a brief update on where the Embarina situation is and how you would see it developing? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you like me to do that now or during my colloquy?
I suppose, why don't you do it, add even your comments, and we'll continue on with Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you.
Just a few things. I thank you, Fred, for that nice update and how you feel about the lakeshore, and I feel like that's a good perspective. Sarah, I guess I would do the Iron Range Row if you wanted some more people. And the only other thing is I just wanted to remind people, as Bob said earlier, that petitions are due for city commission and BLP on April 22nd to the city clerk, and we need some new blood, so come on. That is all.
Commissioner Ryan?
First of all, I just want to let Commissioner Campana know that I'm basically operating with all of my original parts. There have been a couple of little refinements, but I won't share that, because I don't think people really want to know that. And look at this picture on TV, folks. Did you notice something different tonight? Did you run up to your TV sets and what's going on? Who are these people I'm looking at? We have our new cameras in the commission meeting room tonight, so you're able to see who we are and who the people are that stand up to speak with us, and so I think that's a good thing. It's a, we're moving forward. We were kind of in the dark ages. Certainly want to congratulate the 40-Below group. I think this is a wonderful group. It's young professionals in our community who are trying to do things positively, and it sounds like a great event, and I'd be willing to be part of it. And I usually don't respond in this way, but I guess this is probably one of the few times I've been criticized for actively carrying out the role I was elected to do by the citizens of Marquette, actually criticized for making motions and for providing a leadership role. So, I just want to assure the citizens of Marquette, my actions won't change. I will continue to come here and do what I think is right for the time I have left to serve you, and I've enjoyed doing that very much. And I really appreciate the positive comment I get from so many of you when I see you on the street or in the supermarket or somewhere out in town. So, I just want to let you know that I continue to, I will continue to carry out my assignment as I have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. The role, I'd be willing to participate in that. It sounds, it sounds good. If it was the reverse, I might not want to, but rowing downhill can't be that tough. So, hopefully, I'd be willing to field a team, and I think we could probably perhaps get others on the commission, too. The, I think the volunteers that we recognized tonight is certainly, that's what makes our community strong, that's what makes our nation strong, and as Commissioner Cam Benzey mentioned, it's an ideal opportunity for young people to get involved, get some real-world, some real work experience, and perhaps a step into a full-time career. And so, I'd appreciate, I'd encourage other people to look for the AmeriCorps and look at volunteering there, and also volunteering for our vacancies on our city boards and commissions. And any AmeriCorps volunteers that are residents of the city, we would welcome to serve on our boards and commissions, if you're so inclined. Other than that, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you for your comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. And actually, I have pretty extensive ones this evening, but let me, let me start first with the Cinder Pond. Folks have probably been following this, and I know I've gotten a few questions about the weather emergency that's been going on. It's been pretty well-covered in the media. There's been a lot of reporting about the testimony and the fact-finding tours the legislators have put forward, and the continued work and engagement with Michigan State Police and the governor to try to find the resources and the support we need, not only to address what we've already gone through, but in anticipation of what's coming. And so, of course, the Cinder Pond, as many people are aware, the building crumbled as a result of the weather-related issues, and we're working very hard to try to find a way to restore that in time for this boating season. We know that there are a lot of people wondering what the process is going to be for getting the registrations and the fees established, what we might be able to do if we're not able to address the need down there overnight. And I'm hopeful that, following coordination internally this week with staff and the opportunity to coordinate those recommendations with the Harbor Advisory Committee, we'll be able to get some word out, at least, that we'll be able to present to the city commission soon, so that we can get everybody's boating plans for the summer resolved as quickly as possible. But again, I appreciate everybody's patience as we work through this issue. We're hoping to have some more information by the end of this week. It's going to be a very busy April. Just a few things to consider, as, Your Honor, you mentioned, and we get a lot of requests about this, so I'm bringing it out again. We'll be closed on Good Friday, the day before Easter, so that'll be a short week. That's also honor about the time that federal taxes are due and state taxes are due, which is also honor about the time that the election paperwork needs to be submitted. And so, there's an awful lot of things going on where people are going to be in contact with us in ways that aren't typical. But please, if you have any questions or concerns about that, if you aren't finding the information that you need, please come down to the city manager's office, come in, Wendy Jenner I or Kyle can help steer you in the right direction. We have a lot of different projects that are going to require some work sessions this month, and so I know just from the calls I've been fielding that there are a lot of people interested in these issues. Might recall that the city commission approved a subcommittee to conduct negotiations with DLP and MGH, and we're hopeful as that dialogue moves forward that that committee will soon be engaged. We have follow-up to, of course, the standing 90-day deferral on the truck route issues, and that will no doubt require work sessions and then some follow-up meetings that will come with a full public discussion and discourse. We have, per the city charter this year, our first implementation of the statutorily required strategic planning process that was approved by the city commission earlier. And that set of meetings will start kicking off here within April, to be followed on through May. We have what also had been a committee effort as part of the mood of the committee, the 50 different priorities that the commission identified for inclusion in the strategic planning. One of them was to reform their committee structure, and the subcommittee's been appointed, they're starting to meet, and that's going to continue working through April. And so, all of the different committees that are out there are going to see a lot of the commission presence, and anybody who's attending those open meetings will get a chance to get some sense of what the city commission's subcommittee is thinking in those as well. We have two different proposals associated with economic development. One was the smart zone that we heard a little bit about earlier. Another one is the Next Michigan Zone. That's the partnership between Marquette and Delta Counties and the 43 different jurisdictions that supported that. A lot of those public meetings and dialogue will be kicking off sometime during April, and so there'll be more information available, and so people need to pay attention if they're interested in those. And then finally, and I wanted to offer I wanted to offer along to Commissioner Ken Benzey's comments, this year, we have the fortunate circumstances of actually having the Michigan Municipal League meeting in Marquette. And so the fall conference will be in October. That's something that we're getting broad support from all of our partners with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Northern Michigan University, a number of other public and private interests. And this is a conference where the Michigan Municipal League is made up of every body like you see sitting at the Diaz around the state of Michigan, as a group of peer cities. And so this gives us an opportunity to shine in the eyes of our peers, let the rest of the communities in Michigan know just what Marquette has to offer. It typically comes with a lot of other visitors, people looking to get to know us a little bit better, and how we manage our quality of life and deliver our services. And so it's always a great time to show them what has, what has become an internationally renowned set of Marquette model philosophies when it comes to welcoming visitors to our community. So it's a great opportunity, not just to hear sometimes the somewhat complicated process we have to go through to make sure we're giving everybody their travel payments, but it's also a great opportunity to see exactly how important it is to stay connected through organizations like the MML. So I would encourage people to pay attention to that as well, and if they're interested in volunteering, to again, come down and see us at CMO. I know there's going to be an awful lot of things going on that are going to be interesting to the community as well. But, thank you, your honor. No further statements.
Thank you, City Manager. Do you have some final numbers on the freeze-ups, what are the status of our freeze-ups at this point?
At this point, sir, I'd be speculative, because the last time we took account was last Friday. But I believe we're somewhere in the area north of 600 freeze-ups. I know even driving down today, we were receiving comments from people that appeared that some water lines were broken on Seventh Street. And so inevitably, after that frost, he've created problems by pushing everything up out of the way. As the thaw comes and the sinking starts, we're going to see the same kind of challenges, maybe not freeze-up challenges, but exactly the opposite. So I don't think we're out of it yet. To set, to set some expectations for everybody, until we have resolved what resources may be available from the state, until we have resolved what resources may be available from any of the insurance that the city carries, we're going to be taking this very cautiously. We don't have an infinite amount of funds, and we know that all of the money that we're spending now to mitigate the consequences of the weather emergency will directly compete with any recommendations we make for any of the kinds of improvements in park and recreation, community services, or even maybe, in some cases, deferred maintenance that we might have for other parts of the city. So it's, it's been a somewhat understated challenge so far, I think largely because a lot of the problems are under the ground, rather than something that people can see every day. But it's definitely going to be something people are going to want to remain aware of through the planning process and ultimately the budget discussion.
Do we still have crews working 12 hours a day, 7 days a week?
Absolutely, sir, yes.
I think, you know, everyone, the city commission, all the citizens, I think we all owe them a debt of gratitude. They're going way above, beyond the normal things that are expected of them, and we're very fortunate to have a dedicated force of employees assisting us.
Thank you, sir. I completely agree.
Well, with nothing further, we are adjourned.